All right, it is seven oh one, we're kind of in the middle of meeting of the Board of Selectment's order. Our first item of business. Is the Pledge of Allegiance. Marie, would you like to lead us there?
I'd like to read this to give it what the United States of America. Which is, hey, just one nation, one God, individual, liberating, and bestest for all.
Just one second. Okay, I have a number of things I'd like to add as an agenda item or as agenda items. As agenda item nine E, I'd like to discuss our review and awarding of the playground bid. As nine F, I'd like to add in a review and approval of the application for the alcoholic beverage exemption for the town of East Windsor for the summer concert series. As agenda item nine G, I'd like to add a review and approval of the USDA certification for contracts, grants, and loans. As agenda item nine H, I'd like to add a discuss and an authorization of the ARPA auto theft grants. Do I have those? Can I have a motion, please? They'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, to accommodate certain staff schedules that are here tonight, admittedly doing me a favor. I'd like to take a couple of agenda items out of order when we get to section nine. I'd like to take agenda items nine A through H in the following order. Nine A. Nine H. Nine B. Nine E. Nine F. Nine C. Nine seven. And nine D. Or nine G, sorry.
I got F, C, and then G.
F. C, D, G, D. May I have that as a motion, please?
Make a motion that under item new business number nine, we change the order on that's such A, H, B, E, F, C, G, and D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, all members of the Board of Selectmen are here in present. We have in our packets the meeting minutes from our April twenty sixth Board of Selecting Special Meeting and our May fourth Board of Selecting Regular Meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or adjustments on the special meeting agenda, April twenty sixth?
I'll move to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of April twenty six, twenty twenty three, as presented.
Any discussion or further corrections? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry, unanimous?
I'll abstain.
Oh, thank you, Charlie. Sorry about that. Regular meeting of May fourth.
I'll move to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of May fourth, twenty twenty three, as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're on to public participation. This is one of two opportunities for the members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. You'd like to address the board, please state your name, your address, and then state your business. Is there anybody here in the room who would like to address the board? Or anybody online who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. In your packet, I do have a proclamation that I that I issued commemorating May as Mental Health Awareness Month. For your information. Our land use departments have expressed the the need for us to appoint a zoning violations like hearing citation hearing officer. We've had these in the past, but not not in quite a while. After consultation with the town attorney, it was recommended that that person be be an attorney, somebody who's familiar with Uniform Administrative Procedures Act. And so Angelo Sabarino, who is still an attorney and standing with the bar, has agreed that he would provide that function for us if we even if we need to appoint him. It's tough to find attorneys that are willing to do this. So I appreciate him stepping forward.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Angelo Sabarino to the point of the zone violation citation hearing as an officer from expiring May eighth, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment is approved, and I thank Angelo for his willingness to serve. I saw her. Where'd she go? Did Melissa leave?
No. Yeah. Yes, I'm doing it.
Okay. Mr. Sauerhopper, the floor of yours.
Okay, two meetings ago, I was here about the meeting room policy. Agreement. Well, we're calling it the Town Facility Meeting Room Agreement. I did, well, I did not do it. Melissa made the changes at your request. The town attorney reviewed it and added in some alcohol provisions and and Jay made a couple changes where he the notes that you all had.
Yeah. That's what that's what the changes that I put forward were, the notes from the year.
Not sure if anybody has any more questions or anything else. We did add in, you know, what room it was going to be in. We added in a contact person if something happens, if they need to get in. And I'm still working on the automatic lock at ten o'clock. I'm still working on it. So.
Should there be a way at the beginning or something to indicate how you actually reverb the room and who you contact?
It's on there. Confirm or discuss option.
Yes.
Well, I think if anybody who wants to use a room, all's for Selectmen's Office anyways.
I just don't know if everybody knows that they're able to, you know, I don't know if it's really.
We could put a radio button on the website that has the policy and the application.
Okay.
That would be we can make that somewhat prominently displayed there so people know it's available.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we remove the Town Facility Meeting Rooms Agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry. This next, I thank you very much, Joe. I'll be back in a second.
Are you gonna do our?
Yes, but not what you think I'm gonna do. So this was put out here in case you had a chance to get the additional information from AHRC, I was gonna move that forward. Know it's been a hectic couple of weeks, so if that's not right yet, we can do that at the June.
I do have the updated numbers, so we can wait till.
So let's talk about it.
Okay, I have the updated number for the piece of equipment I wanted purchased.
Okay. And that that number has has of course come down.
Hasn't substantially gone up. Let's put it that way. It's still under a hundred thousand dollar mark.
Oh, great.
Okay.
So what are we not getting that?
The same piece of equipment. It it was previous to this, it was eighty eighty-two, so it's eighty-six then. Or eighty. Yeah, eighty-seven thousand.
All right, so we have the updated quote for the equipment that we would need to do it. Thank you very much, Joe. Al, what is your?
I went through and I just actually priced everything that was needed to replace all the bridges on the existing trail. Complete the two bridges or three bridges that are on the new section that they're working on now. Is that the red trail? Is it red?
This is the new one that goes further south?
Yeah. And then across the the bridge is a piece of town land that we've previously done some very basic work on. That would need a couple of bridges, so we include that. Would also include, you know, where, so like it's Bridge eleven, which is that little pallet bridge basically that they replaced recently, but that where the road goes up the hill steeply up the hill there and that that crown of that piece of trailer has started to watch out. This includes a set of appropriate stairway to fix that erosion issue. Because that left side where they made the the boardwalk sort of thing also will still flood. So it's actually less money. I I just took all the prices and ran it through Home Depot, so we're, you know, retail prices, you know, and it's basically it comes up to eighteen thousand dollars. But I'd like to go for, you know, put it at twenty or twenty-five, just because if they, you know, prices go up or whatever, this would all, of course, be run through the treasurer's office when they get this wood, and I think we would, I talked to Joe the other night. Ordered all at once and keep it at the town garage where it's safe and accounted for. So anyway, that's what it is.
If I could make one suggestion, is figure maybe about a thousand dollars for the gravel we want to fill in steps.
Yes.
That would cover four loads of gravel.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's a good idea. So let's say put it at twenty-five thousand. And that includes all the screws and bolts and nuts and left too.
So using twenty-six thousand, twenty-five thousand, if you want.
Twenty-five thousand with this gravel. So we originally started out somewhere around fifty, but once I started actually running the numbers, it much cheaper than that. And that covers more than what's actually planned for at this point in time, but and it's kind of, I think, pie in the sky to get that all done. But, you know, maybe if we have the means and the and the resources, you know, we can get together some big wood parties and get those things done.
How long does the quote go for?
It's thirty days.
We're fine. I can't get it through the Board of Finance and the town meeting in thirty days. We'll be fine. Okay. So I'm coming up with rounded up one hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
And this includes all these attachments, right?
Yes, sir.
Hope you guys are satisfied. A motion to move forward with an appropriation from hundred for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of the town of ARPA designation forwarded to the Board of Finance and to a town meeting would be appropriate.
Make a motion to appropriate or to approve the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for ARPA money for the vodka quote that we have for Joe Sauerhopper and all the supplies needed for the AHRC trust.
Second.
Any further discussion? And we are forwarding that to the Board of Finance and to a town meeting.
Excuse me, and forward to Board of Finance for a town meeting.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll send you the spreadsheet, Joe. And now you're responsible for that, too.
Begging the Board of Indolents, I'd like to postpone agenda item eight C until our next meeting.
Move to postpone agenda item eight C until our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're now on to a discussion pertaining to the request for the revisions for the farm lease for the Melrose Road property. Ruth Calabrese is here to answer questions that we may have. You'll recall that we did put this out to bid. We did have a bid respondent. He's here tonight. The farm lease has been updated and reviewed by Pullman and Comley. I need authorization to sign it or to answer any questions or outstanding issues that you all may have.
This is one of your phone things?
Yeah.
Questions, comments? Look good to me.
And I would make a motion that we allow the signature of Port Shulman to enter into the farm lease. Want to be specific on it? Between the Tono East Windsor and landlord Ian Neil, I think is how you say it, N-E-I-L-L.
Ian Neil.
Okay, on one fifty-three Melrose Road, Broadway.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Thank you, Ms. Calabrese. Appreciate it. Following the meant call of the agenda, I'd now like to take our agenda item nine H, a discussion and authorization of the ARPA auto theft grant. Chief Hart, thank you for being here. Come on, come on up. So I I perused through this and I'm gonna, I kind of do the sixty thousand, but we can fill in all of the things.
Sure.
So this is an ARPA funded grant that's going to be used for increased police patrols to combat auto theft. It's a multi-pound approach. It's gonna be total of fifty pounds, right? The major cities and then surrounding cities. We get thirty-five thousand dollars from this. It's gonna be used for specifically overtime.
Yes, overtime for marked and unmarked cars out there with people in them. Trying to can do enforcement, speed enforcement, just to stop traffic and, you know, check out who's in town and or equipment violations, or we can do some covert surveillance. I also included possibly we could use the drone and do some surveillance with the drone in the evening or late night hours, so it is to take care of overtime.
You guys have probably heard, we've had some increased activity in car in terms of car break-ins and car thefts at dealerships. I did a ride along with the police department on the evening shift on May fifth. Thank you again for facilitating that. That was the the night the first one of these happened, and I can tell you, we were in several of these parking lots just hours before it happened. So kudos to the police department for having already had that be part of their patrol efforts. You know, they're just not everywhere all at once, and and this will help boost up some of the enforcement opportunities that we have for that. Anything I should add there?
I don't know, I just to bring everybody's memory to where we started this. This was back in November. I actually was before you and we discussed this. It was this grant, I wrote this grant and I wrote the rural road grant back in November, and they were submitted at the same time, so that's what this is.
These were the two I sent over you.
That's correct, yeah. So, you know, in the last six months, we've been able to bring in the DUI grant for thirty-nine thousand, a rural road grant for fifty thousand, the body worn camera grant for sixteen thousand, and now the auto theft and violent crime grant for thirty-five thousand, so we brought it in the last six months, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in grant money, so.
All ARPA?
No, only the only the rural roads in this one were ARPA. The other one was DOT money for DUI and then the body worn camera grant.
Which is JAG grant?
That that was actually, I think, established because of the Accountability
Okay.
Act. So I think it comes through through OPM, but I think it's the state money.
Is that one of the new cameras?
Yes, it is. We're scheduled to have the in-car cameras installed in June and July.
So with those, this is an aside, but with those, green means that it's charred, blue means that it's recording, purple means somebody's actively watching on the other end.
Yes, you can do that as well, yeah.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, it is. They're nice cameras.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to the ARPA grant? If not, can I have authorization to sign it? Accepting the grant authorization, my signature.
I want to accept the State of Connecticut Auto Theft and Violent Crime Grant on behalf on behalf of the town of East Windsor and authorize the First Selectmen's signature.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Discussion of the Memorial Tree Planting Policy. With Director Moltesi. Sarah, you and I were at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last week and the week before where they moved this forward to us. Melissa, you want to give the background on this and explain what we're looking at?
Sure. Good evening. So we were approached by a couple residents that are interested in donating either a memorial tree or memorial bench in honor of a resident that has passed away. We have two families right now that are looking to do this, so we thought it was pertinent to create a policy to allow this to occur in a meaningful way with some parameters so that we're not just accepting anything and that the town gets to select what exactly is being donated to make sure that we can maintain it and that it's good quality. So that myself and the commission came up with some examples that are in your packet of different benches that we feel would aesthetically look nice in the parks that we currently have. Also for future planning and also some options for trees that could also be donated and what the parameters would be for those as well. So we are just looking for approval from this board to move forward with this so that we can get these two families moving along with their donation.
Would all benches need to have board pads?
Most likely for maintenance purposes.
The visual here was hilarious because he was emphatically nodding and you're like, probably.
They have to delve down to the ground. And it's easier to maintain them.
So I will say that the lady in red bench is not bolted down to the ground and we move it for different events, but for the most part, we would like them to be.
So most likely.
Yes.
Questions or comments?
I wonder if somebody wants to do a statue rather than a bench.
Well, the policy speaks to benches and trees.
I realize that.
Well, my point being that the policy that we have will cover benches and trees if somebody were to try and come and do something outside of that. We'd have to figure something out or not allow it.
Charlie, I didn't see it in here. What? On you can, okay.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
Maybe we should approve the County East Windsor Memorial Benches and Tree Policy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Harry. Next up, we're on to the review and awarding of the playground bid. Les?
No, that's me.
That's you? The Board of Finance secured funding last night. Their project has been put out to bid. There are two bids that we have received. The information from both of those bases in your packet. You guys have a recommendation?
Well, to go with Tobacco Valley Suns, they are the lower of the two and they're that they've done stuff before. They've done playgrounds. The other company didn't seem to have a lot of playground experience, so would be my recommendation. We go actually with the lower person.
Does anyone have any question or comments on the bids, the recommendation, the projects? We do have approval to plan in zone. Those are questions, I'm sure somebody was gonna ask.
I would make a motion that we enter into a contract with tobacco, bow and suns.
Yep.
Tobacco and sun builders incorporated for the playground equipment.
The installation of the playground.
Installation of a playground equipment at East Windsor Park.
And authorizing the First Selectmen to.
And authorize the First Selectmen into signing, signing contract. Because I was going to recount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I can't believe I'm looking at their their bid documentation. It says they've been in business for thirty-four years and then their incorporation date is nineteen eighty-nine. How is nineteen eighty-nine thirty-four years ago?
Sometimes you don't incorporate right away. Sometimes you're in L.L.
No, it was thirty-five, like, oh, that is crazy. Thirty-four years ago, it's supposed to be nineteen seventy. Like, I mean, that's. They are slipping away.
Somebody graduated by school in nineteen seventy.
You're a hetch, aren't you? The gap is getting narrow, yes, for sure. So I'm now gonna say we're gonna go on to the application for alcoholic beverage exemption submitted by the town. This was one of the handouts that I gave you tonight. You all know that the Summer Concert Series is coming up. For the last two years, we have granted the waiver from the prohibition of alcohol on town properties specifically for East Windsor Park on those dates. The over the last two years, we have had exactly zero problems, and it's been a nice add to what has also been a nice add to community and the offerings of those those concerts, so our own our own rules say that we need to go through the approval process. It's been signed off on by the Park and Rec Department and was submitted by the Park and Land Department, signed off on by the Chief of Police. It does not need fire and martial approval. It doesn't need my.
Make a motion authorize the First Selectmen to sign the application for exception for alcoholic beverages for East Windsor Park for the summer.
Second, made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Without clarification, I wouldn't. Have to list the dates? Yes, I would put in the dates because for the summer, we open it up to anybody.
Well, if there's a redating.
Well, we're.
Can you just say Summer Concert Series?
Yes. Summer Concert Series. Friendly amendment. Thank you.
That'd be for the summer.
Not for summer. All right, good try.
Motion has been made and seconded. The motion has been amended. Is that amended?
Amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, folks. All right. So we updated our bid policy a little while back, and one of the things that asked to be done as a result of that is that our on-call service contractors be rebid. That's happened. Len has now, Len Norton is here. We have, well, I'm gonna let you take this over, Len. So walk us through what you did, what that what your recommendation is.
I have a lot more of that. Well, we'll start with that since that's what we brought up. Well, we'll start with that since that's what we brought up.
First first in your pack in the pack is uh Walrobe Construction Company, would you rather start with that or would you uh? What do you want to do?
I I could start with that too.
What do you got in your hand?
I have the on-call stuff.
Let's do that.
Okay, so um I did. Did you guys get copies of stuff? I know I sent it to them, so I was okay. So anything particularly you want to start with? What do you have first? I have everything here.
First thing in there is the Walrobe Construction, next thing is Asplund.
Do you want to talk?
Okay, let's go, let's go in your order.
Walrobe.
Walrobe Reconstruction and Drainage. Okay, you have the uh I believe what I sent over was a copy of the bid results. Um I had to disqualify two bidders because they did not complete the proper bid form. One of them happened to be the low bidder that was extremely low and concerning. But he had called and left a voice message that he was probably going to pull out anyhow. So unfortunately um the one number two, the lowest, the lowest qualified bidder was actually Tobacco and Sun Building, which apparently you're gonna hire to do the park. It's probably the same company.
Yeah.
I I I have nothing to do with the park, so I don't know about that, but there's I hear, I just heard the name come up for that, so um they were the lowest qualified bidder. I got very good reviews, I did a number of references on them. And uh got excellent reviews. That I got very, I got fairly good reviews from the the second lowest qualified bidder as well.
That paramount?
Yes. But I mean with the with the with the great references that I got on tobacco and some building, I mean I can't think of any reason why not to use them, they filled out the form right, they're so that's my recommendation.
Wouldn't you expect the work would start, assuming that we award the bid tonight?
Well, I would have to I believe that's, I believe I talked to that gentleman. And he would just like to, he he'd like to know what was going on, I said I was coming here tonight, they need to schedule stuff, they gotta order materials and what have you, so I mean, it could be a month and a half before they start. I don't know. I would almost prefer they didn't start until after school was out, so that we didn't have to deal with school bus rerouting. I mean, e- even if they don't close the road, it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
And at some point, we are going to we are reconstructing an entire portion of that road, its full depth, so that means we're gonna change the elevation of the road, we're gonna remove the road that's there, put a new road in. And it's not gonna be conducive to school buses driving through, I mean, traffic will be allowed through, but it'll be one way, it'll be alternating at times and and this particular project, there is the possibility for the a thirty six inch covert that needs to be replaced down near the intersection with Winkler that it may have to be closed for like a day or two, but being reopened for sure overnight, they're not gonna be allowed to leave it closed overnight.
Is that the same covert where we had some constituent issues about two years ago? No?
We have culverts all over town, we have issues with them, honestly. This one in particular, I don't like it. I think somebody complained a little bit down and back, but I I don't think this is one that was a great, great concern that.
Wasn't a single issue?
No, 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 further up the street, there was a gentleman who was getting a little water in his yard, he's got a sump pump going, so we're gonna fix his drainage, he's he's actually the person that it's it's I don't wanna say instigated, but brought this to our attention for him, so as I looked at the global picture out there as to what we had for drainage and what have you. I think we can fix things for a number of people by doing this, so that's interesting, isn't it? Um so that's my recommendation on that particular item.
So where that big tree is when Wells meets Winkler? That's where you're gonna start?
That big sycamore tree?
Yeah, that's where you guys are gonna start, that area there, right down towards.
You you can actually see where we we paved up to a certain point, yeah, right there.
Yeah. Uh all of the funding is coming out of next fiscal year?
No. Next fiscal year? Oh, we have money right now.
Well, I'm and that's why I was asking about the start date is to see if we're gonna be able to capitalize on funds available now.
Well, we'll be able to capitalize some on funds available though. Um I don't know if we have that many funds available in that particular county, I think most of our our money is in the uh C N R.
Oh, that's fine, then. Okay.
Do you want to do one of these at a time?
Well, I would recommend that.
Yeah, so we we would need to award the Wells Road roadway construction bid to
Tobacco.
Tobacco and Sun Builders.
I'll move to award the Wells Road roadway construction bid to Tobacco and Sun Builders.
Second.
You authorize your signature on anything?
Yeah, yeah.
And and authorize the first selectman to sign the document.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Here's.
And there'll be a contract, the whole harmless insurance certificate and all that stuff before they start.
So the next thing we have is Asplund.
Okay, that's a tree. Alright, we put up the uh R F P or uh tree work. We had two respondents. Asplund and Distinctive. Distinctive is our current vendor who does a wonderful job for us. Um their numbers were a little little uh more than Asplund. I'm going to tell you that when I first started here, we used Asplund, and I'm not gonna say anything bad about Asplund, I'm just gonna tell you my history. Um we did use Asplund because they are in the state bid um many years ago. And the hourly rates are very good. Um they don't tend to wanna give you a price for a particular tree, or at least they didn't in the past. Um and they weren't really fast on the job. Um
Which kinda is counterintuitive to the on-call nature of the work.
Well, no, they will get to the job quickly. But it took them a while to cut the tree down.
The rate was better, but it took a long.
There's an hourly rate, but then you got the hours that it takes you to do the job. Now, that being said, this is an on-call proposal, so I would like it if I could use I'm gonna try to get them to give me a a a cost per tree. We work a deal with Distinctive where they basically put the tree on the ground and we clean it up, they'll chip up what they need to, we do a lot of the cleanup, we save ourselves a lot of money, and although he has hourly rates here for four hours and this and that. We'll call and say we got, you know, this tree, this tree, this tree, they go out, they mark them, okay, it's gonna cost you six thousand dollars. Figure in their hourly rate, now I don't have a problem, no, Asplund, when you look at the form, came in with the lowest hourly rate, I have no problem at all using them and seeing how that works out. But I would also like to reserve the right to use Distinctive if I'm not getting things done with Asplund, and I don't know that I will or not, I just would like to read. And I'm gonna mention this in everyone that comes up here, you know, we have hourly rates from people, but if if the low person can't get it done, I I'd like to have the right, it it's an on-call list. I'd like to have the right to go to the next person. And they will all supply, you know, both harmless insurance certificates, whatever. Anyone that we anticipate we might use.
Yeah.
So
Do you want us to to approve the R F P submissions for both Distinctive and Asplund?
You.
I'll make a motion that we enter into an agreement with Asplund and Distinctive contractors for on-call work for various trees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Were there no others when they put in?
No, they were the only two. Yeah, I know.
A lot of tree guys out there.
I can ensure this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm on insurance.
I mean people have called after the fact and want to know what the bid results were, it's like, okay, but you didn't put a bid in, I'm not sure why you're asking, but.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Alright, so. Next. Um Let me look, sir.
Okay, again. Two people. There's a lot of culverts out there too, but um and uh Building Environmental Systems LLC was the low uh proposer. Um I got two very good references from that company. Um they are however located in Collinsville, Connecticut, which is forty five minutes from their shop to my office, which it is what it is, they were uh appreciably more, they were appreciably more. The markup was a lot more. Uh again I don't have a problem using the and and the the second bidder or proposer was our current vendor. Uh who who we have a good relationship with. So I I'd like to, you know, make this as well a list. Being in Collinsville, Connecticut if I need, you know, if I have a problem and I need plumbing especially, I mean water you need to take care of or it's gonna be an issue, if they can't get here in a timely fashion, I'd like the option of being able to call number two. We'll be paying a little more per hour, but he's in South Windsor, he's he's local. And he could take it, I I mean, I'd call number one first. But if he says I can't be there till noon and it's seven o'clock in the morning, well depending on the situation, so.
What does a markup include?
Uh parts you know, parts, materials. You know, valves, pipe, whatever.
So even though they all the rate is higher on the second company with the ten percent versus the thirty percent on the markup on item, it could be a wash or it could be a saving.
Depending depending on how much is, yeah, how many materials are needed, yeah. Thirty percent's a little high on markup, in my opinion. Ten fifteen, some people get to twenty, but.
Forty five minutes away is a long way for an on-call service.
It depends on the project, I'll I'll go. I mean, I I'm happy to go with the Dan Kellner Company, but I'm standing before you with with the numbers from.
Well, you should have more than one option, so I think we just do them both.
Well, that's right, that's that's kind of my point, and and some of the other ones where we had, you know, multiple proposers like six, seven, eight, nine, I wanna go down to one, two, three in particular on on some that are and and we'll get to that, but I'd like the option to be able to use more than one person for the in these instances because on-call means we need you.
Yep. What's Kellner's current rate?
Uh I think he's a hundred. He went up a half, I mean, you know, like books.
Alright, what do you guys want to do?
I'll move to accept the on-call contractor plumbing bids to Building Environmental Systems LLC and Dan Kellner Company LLC.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? So, Harry.
Next.
Uh we've got carpenter painter.
That was an easy one.
What are we painting?
You never know, we we don't use that a lot, we are, my people do.
But you know what?
If we need one we got a cost for it. That that ties someone down to a cost. Um and the low person is our current vendor who we don't have a problem with, he's reasonable ten percent on his any markups, he's kept the same cost throughout the the three-year period which he has done, this is the same cost the last three-year period, so he treats us very well. We use them some I mean, even for the you know, when we do renovations and stuff, we use them for for, you know, putting a wall up, knocking a wall down kind of thing, but you know, we're not his bread and butter. And he he treats us fine, and he's and he shows up when we need him, you know.
This is a relatively low-use on-call service.
Yes.
So this one would be okay, just going with one.
Yes, that one is, yes. There's there's really not an emergency that you need a wall painted or a wall put up or whatever. Oh.
Move to award the on-call contractor carpenter painter bid to L N S Builders.
Second.
And then further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? So, Harry. On-call excavation. Did you have just the one submission?
Just one, two, seven, right?
No, you gotta go across the top.
Oh, I see, I see.
There was too many to go up and down, so.
You have to go across the top and what the heck is my one that I have with my hands on?
Alright, this wasn't quite as straightforward, well, to me it is, but you may not see it that way, there's a lot of lovers on here. Um I actually had to highlight things on my copy so I could see that. Oh, did I send you the highlighted copy?
No, I can see, I can see why.
Oh. So the lowest proposer overall with pretty much everything but except replacing the sidewalk per square foot is Coda Construction. Then we have Holden Construction and Roller Cut Construction that are very competitive a little higher, a little lower, whatever, in the top part of the bracket up there. And then a little more sporadic as you come down through um the lower end of the uh the columns there. So, and I do have one that's uh L S C Latex LLC had some pretty low numbers for for the equipment there, and I don't I don't think they were including an operator in that, they they look compared to everyone else's numbers.
They're very low.
They're kind of low, so I'm thinking they weren't really figuring in operators. But in any event um the the honestly, the the important things that we do are up in the top when we talk about, we we do a lot of replacing catch basin tops, we do a lot of replacing catch basins, repairing catch basins. Those are the big items for us, and 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 if you look closely, and I probably should have given you a highlighted copy Coda, Holden and Roller Cut are the top three um bidders or proposers. Now, currently, in our current situation si- situation we we had, we ended up with three currently, one that we could never get a hold of. And we had to rely a lot on Coda and Holden.
Who's the third currently?
Uh, uh. Korea, Lake Korea. Um.
Couldn't get a hold of them and then they didn't submit a bid. I wonder if they were trying to tie something.
Well, honestly, he he does. He does a lot of water main. He made our water main up on Abbey Road. He's a big water main guy. He he he's he's one of. Connecting the water companies preferred contractors. So my recommendation would be and and. The way it currently works is if if we have a project, then it wouldn't be. Wells Road, because that that clearly has to go out the bit as you saw what the numbers were. If we have a catch basin we need to fix, we got to run a pipe we need to do, we need to cross them. We need to cross the road and we're not comfortable doing it with our with our uh, forces. W- we need to bring somebody like this in to do it. So. Currently, what we do is, or what I would do and what I'm doing now, I would give all three of these gentlemen. That plan. Or that project and say. Give me a cost. Based upon your. Hourly rates, because they're gonna all, you know, one guy may think it takes this long to do it, or one guy thinking it takes that, you know. So. I would prefer, my my request. Is to be able to use either Coda, Holden or Roller Cut. On an ask-call-as-needed basis and and who's available. Again. Some of our situations, we need it done. We got a hole in the road. We need to fix it. You know, if we can't handle it in-house, we need to get it done, so. If I call. One. And he says. I I can't get there today. I gotta find somebody that can.
As an example. Although it wasn't our issue, but we. Joe in particular helped out with the repair project. Water main break at school.
Yeah.
That was that was an on-call service where, you know, we don't, if we don't have it fixed by Friday, they're not gonna have school on Monday.
Right.
This is three enough, but I mean, when they get busy, reason plenty. We've been operating two forever.
Yeah.
Was I just asking?
I want to say.
M V B a little fix-it job, right?
Pardon?
We just awarded to M V B a little fix-it job a couple of weeks ago. Shoreline boss.
Yeah. Well, we. That we had to get prices for because he wasn't a. Preferred contract.
He wasn't on the on-call list.
Right.
So. But. I would entertain a motion. Um, that we accept coating construction, folding construction and roller. Roller cut construction for the on-call excavation contractor services for the twenty-twenty-three um. Move forward.
And I'm familiar with all three of these individuals, these companies and they all do. Roller Cut actually did our project on Pleasant Street for us. Because we needed it done and he was available and he gave us the best price, so, so.
Oh, second, Harry's motion.
Further discussion?
Yes. There a cap on this? Like say he, you know, but. On instance, the dam let's go. And it's gonna cost.
Oh, that's that's gotta go out the bid.
Actually, no, the the dam did not like it. When the dams did like, oh, that was an emergency circumstance. We had to fix that now.
Right.
But it came here. It came here after the time, but Leno that already had the the solution placed and the work was started.
No, 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 no. The the. The dam reconstruction project went out to bid, the actual dam project. The emergency project was the wall along Depot Street. Which the contractor we hired was the contractor that did the dam for us.
Right.
And got us out of a jam on South Water Street, where we had, we were gonna lose a twenty-inch sewer main and an eighteen-inch water main or whatever. Um, so we had good experience with that contractor and they came in, treated us very fairly. And we 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 were. We knew their work, we knew what their rates were and we. We hired them to do it. So in that case, you would have to, I guess, rely on us to. Come in, as we did, come in with the situation and say, look, here's what we got. Here's our recommendation. We work with these people. They're gonna take care of us. And then we do it. But the these people are generally, these are the. You know, under twenty thousand people or, you know, you gotta get three prices kind of thing.
Okay, so I'll finish my question. Is there a cap at which the price? He needs to come back to us and say. We have this emergency situation. It's gonna cost a half a million dollars. I need your approval. Is there a number? Or does he have? Compromise to call up. Oda and say, it's a half a million dollars, but come and do it because you're on my preferred on-call list.
Hold on. I wouldn't do that.
I'm not saying you will. I'm asking, is there a cap? There is not. Come on, there is not. I think they should have. And we should make a policy.
Well, we have a policy, but that that wasn't, and we just approved this. Three months ago.
But you could, I I think I I understand. Your concern, Charlie. Uh, but I think if we just look at it. That, and I know you're saying emergency, but. Even if it's an emergency, and I thought one of these companies could handle whatever that emergency was at whatever the cost was. I still have to come here. And ta- and talk to this board because I don't have. Over twenty thousand dollars. Wh- which is what we did for that wall when it came down, over twenty thousand dollars. It. Ordinarily, it has to go out the bid. Now, in the case where you're losing a road or losing. Well, then we have to talk, then we we have to collectively look at the problem and say, look. How's the best way to handle this?
In essence, you kind of do have a cap and it's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I I that's the way I look at it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, you can't appropriate, you can't encumber money that's above and above beyond your appropriated budget anyway. Right, so if it's got a hundred thousand, that's great, but if it doesn't, you don't have three hundred thousand. So for for example. You know, if you have. A hundred and twenty thousand dollar road repair, and all you have left is a hundred and twenty thousand. Or if you had a hundred and fifty thousand left, you could do that out of your appropriated budget. No, is that not correct? I I believe, I believe we still have to follow the bid.
Yeah.
This is, this is, you know, I mean, this is for. Yeah, on-call stuff, like if we're gonna pay for road, we need somebody to actually finish a catch basin or fix a catch basin or do a crossing. But we follow the policy that. If it's over twenty thousand. It has to go out the bid. You know, I mean, when when the wall came, when the wall fell, Len came to you with a price of a half a million dollars. We had already been with the contractor, came to you guys, said, we need a half a million. This is the budget number. It's gonna be a half a million. It shouldn't exceed that and that's.
Okay.
Uh, he was waiting in my office on a Tuesday morning before I got there with like, I've got bad news. Come with me. Tom, are you, would you mind looking the lights in the back? Thanks.
Oh, that's a whole.
Any further discussion on the the motion? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? So, Harry. What's next, Larry? H B C.
Well. Thermodynamics Mechanical Services. Was the low proposer. Kept his prices for three years. Um. I got three. Good references that they do an excellent job. They're great to work with, knowledgeable, honest, clean, courteous. I mean, I guess you can't ask for any more than that. Um. Our current vendor. Were were kind of. We kind of use Fahrenheit a little bit now for the for the system here and Dan Kellner Company. For uh. The other odds and ends. For for HVAC, like the rooftop units at the. Uh. Annex and we're having. So, I mean, again. Thermal Dynamics. I used to work with them because they were our. Vendor when I. It was when I first, sometime during my tenure here, they were. They were our vendor and then. Then they weren't. So uh. Again, I don't have a problem using them. But it would be nice if I could uh. Rely upon the. Dan Kellner and even Fahrenheit Mechanical, even though Dan Kellner's number two and Fahrenheit would be number. Number three. There's another number two, but they're. They're fairly far away. They used, they used to be our vendor. They actually put the system in here.
Uh, they're out.
Well, I'm just saying, but you know.
I I don't even know, but whoever whoever did.
Save save more, save more. Cooling and heating ink.
And all fairness Fahrenheit has straightened it all out and done a great job of us here. I think it's fair to say they've they're straightening it out.
So my my recommendation, obviously, I mean, the low bidder is the low, the low bidder proposer or whatever, so I would say. You know, we start with them where we can and if we. If we read. I I guess I I would like to use Fahrenheit if we ran into a situation in in this building in particular. That Fahrenheit. Couldn't figure out. I'd like the option of being able to, that Thermal Dynamics couldn't figure, I like the option of being able to go to Fahrenheit. And if there's an an issue that, again. Depending on, and I don't know what'll be the case, but middle of summer, you know, you need cool, middle of winter, you need heat. Yet for some reason, Thermal Dynamics, I. Can't. Get there and the people in this building are freezing, our folds are gonna be ringing off the hook, so I'd like to be able to. At least call. Kellner and say, hey. Or Fahrenheit. Depending on which building.
So, I'll tell you, I I get some of those concerns from employees in the building too. And. You know, so if Fahrenheit, Fahrenheit's almost, well, it is twenty percent higher than than the low bidder, but if they're the people who can make that, put them go away. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, this isn't tongue-in-cheek or being glum. I mean.
My phone just breaks. They're not in my building.
In 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 the winter, it is a real problem. So if that's the company that we've had success with. Then even though the the cost differential is. Eighteen an hour, I I think that is. We we should, I'm telling you that's. We should maintain that. And honestly, if we picked the phone up, they're. You can. Two minutes up the street. Just across the tracks. And they've been super responsive, especially because they know the issues we have here.
Okay.
One and three, right?
Yeah.
We'll move to award the on-call HVAC bits to Thermodynamics Mechanical Services Inc. Dan Kellner Company and Fahrenheit Mechanical Services.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Would you call Dan Kellner to go down temperature on his markup to be consistent with his point marker? Rather than twenty percent?
I, you know, I noticed that he did that and there's. I can ask him. I mean, there's, I certainly can ask him. I'm thinking there's a different. Animal there between plumbing supplies and mechanical type supplies, but I'll I'll certainly ask the question.
Electrical.
Okay.
Did we vote on those three yet? For the.
Latex LLC was a low. Proposer. Uh, sixty-eight dollars. Mercury Electric. Was next. Wait a minute, what the hell did I do? I went, I got it backwards. Mercury is number one, Latex is number two. And Advanced Electrical Systems is number three. Um. I got two fair references. For uh. Latex. They were, they do mostly signalization. And highway lighting and that sort of thing. Mercury. I got one good. Reference that they're, you know, people were generally pleased with service and quality. It has. In one reference. I called and the gentleman said. They gave. My name is a reference? So you know, that's not going well.
It's a high water.
They said, yeah, I wish they would have called me is is was his response. They are my greatest frustration.
Wow. Good, just for clarification, I think I misunderstood. Understood what you said. You said originally you had Latex LLC as number one and Mercury Electric number two. And you wanted to train Mercury from two to one.
Yes, it looks like I put my one and my two in the wrong spot on the.
But are your narratives gonna be?
Yes, the narratives are. Correct.
Either way, the references on one and two are bad.
So your narratives. Are. Still. The right order. So Latex is number one on the narrative and Mercury is number two on the narrative?
Yes.
I was changing them to match the other. Okay.
So.
So so honestly, if if. And I'm sorry to. If this seems, again, I'm not, I'm not being glum. I am a little, little retired, but. If if we have, if you if you're ranking out three. Bid bid recommendations for the on-call service and one and two come with bad references, why are they even on here?
No, no. I'm just saying. There, that's not my recommendation.
I see.
That's just, that's just where they fell in the, you know, number one, number two and number three. So now we've talked about one and two, so now we're gonna go to number three. Which is Advanced Electrical Systems, who is our current vendor. Who we have no problems with and is very responsive. And. Although he's not within, you know, there is a policy within, what is it, ten percent?
Ten percent.
So although he's not within ten percent of the low bid.
Yes, he is.
I mean. Right, he he's within ten percent, right? So, even though, well, they, especially they got crappy references. I believe our policy is, and he holds it for three years. Is that we can ask him if he would do it for that. He has the option of, if he would. Well, actually, I gotta be honest with you. He's the lowest qualified bidder, in my opinion. Let's start with that. Now. Do we ask? If he go, if he's ten percent more to go down to the person that's. Ten percent less, even though they didn't get great. References.
Well, I personally think that you just, you just throw those out, they they happen. Right. They're they're not qualified, then they're then they're priced.
I'm just asking. I have big target, I I have big targets on me. I just wanna bring people to the party.
Plus their markup is lower than all.
I I have.
Obviously, more than one, too, right? So like, so obviously, factors in the mix and then wells.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I. From an electrical standpoint. We have been very fortunate with. Our current vendor. That we have not need, when when. When we say we need you, we get him. So. I'm not concerned in that particular case.
Okay.
Honestly.
Been there in emergency situations. During stormy generators. He's literally. Sometimes they're faster than we are. I mean, doesn't it mean so to have just a a backup one too, like the primary guy and if you, for some reason, he's, you know, in Margaritaville? Whatever. Well, you know, he's not a solo guy.
Well, I'll tell you what we could do. Uh, the the next, the next. Qualifying bidder, price rise would be Scott's Electric. Who's right in Ellington and actually I think does the work for the schools. So I would be more than happy to put them on as. A backup. To advanced electrical systems. I and and I know him personally as well and. He's fine. It's price, if if he was low, I. Would say fine, but. So we could, we could, I would definitely entertain that.
Just in case.
Yeah.
You're not fine.
Move to award the on-call electrical bids to Advanced Electrical Systems LLC and Scott's Electric.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? I got paving next. You do, uh, pavement restoration, actually. I'm not sure if you point that as a difference without. Wow, there's some. Big disparities.
Well, yeah. Let me uh. Basically.
He's got one more. He got. We can even do. Sloughing reports by submission.
This, this is what uh. This was my pavement restorations, bits spec and bid proposal. We've got these numbers, okay? Uh, Andric Materials. Was low. B and W Paving was next. You know. I would be remiss. If I didn't make the statement that um. There is a state bid. For paving. Um. We generally, even though they're a. A fairly decent company, they they don't take very good care of us colossal materials. Um. Their prices are lower than. What I got for pavement. They don't do some of the, you know, catch basin tops and stuff. I had everything in this, in this spec. Um. Or like the redheaded stepchild, you know, they come out and they'll. They'll mill a road and and leave it for a month before they pave it. They'll grind up a road and grade it and leave it for a month. First, properly road, classic example. Um, um, Amelia Road. I mean, people wanted me to wash their houses. That's.
Before us, but thank goodness it was.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and they don't wanna hear no, but that's the answer. So I, last year we went with a company that was uh number two. Um. Uh. On the state bid list, matching the number two number for for paving, which is basically the paving, the the milling, that that kind of stuff. And they were gonna take great care of us. And they did for the first road or two. And and then they treated us like the other company did. So, as as a matter of fact, I was so angry with them. That we didn't do all our roadwork that I wanted to last year. They left a million dollars on the table last year because I told them they were, you're done. We're not doing business like this anymore. You lied, you're not doing it, whatever. So. Andric Materials happens to be, I believe, out of Chickaby, Massachusetts, um. Not that that matters, but I got really good references from them. Everybody I called. Um, other towns, Wolverham, Massachusetts. Uh, actually, South Windsor. Uh, South Hadley DPW, they're clean, they're in and out, they're quick, they're, so. Whether or not I spend the entire. One point two million dollars, I gave them a list of roads and some different items that I that would. I would like to do based upon the season and when we get started and what we can accomplish. Um, so whether or not I use the one point two or or something less than that. Um, I I, I'm making the recommendation that we use them based upon their. Their proposal and their good references. For our paving work in town. And I don't know when they could start either, but I'd, I'd be in, I'd be inclined to, again. Keep them off the streets until the middle of June, just because. Because that's really, you know, that's. Most of the work is milling a couple inches or milling to the base and that's just, again, not conducive to bus traffic. And I haven't, they have called a few times, wanted to know what was going on. So they're, they're anxious to work here in our town. And I told them that I had a meeting that I had to attend and that I would let them know once I was here. So.
I want to stand a motion that we. Find on-site materials to be used for pavement restoration. Projects.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. But I think you're done.
My God, I hope so. I'm sorry it took a while, but we had a lot of.
Okay, there's a, there was one more handout that we do need to move, and this is pertaining to the uh Congressional Direct and Spending Award that we got. Uh, for the community center project, part we're, we're putting together. The necessary paperwork. We need to access the funding through USDA. And one of the things that we need to provide back to them. Um, is the signed version of this form, is a certification for contracts, grants and loans. What this says is that we're not gonna be using any of the federal money for any uh lobbying purposes. Um, it's a, it's not something we could do anyway, but it is a requirement that the um feds make sure that that we're. Certifying that we won't be using it for, for lobbying.
They can motion me authorize for selectmen to sign I R D instruction nineteen forty dash Q and lib. A one certification for contracts, grants and loans.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, tax refunds.
I move to approve the tax refunds totaling one thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Uh, public participation, this is the set, public second opportunity to address members of the Board of Selectmen. Is there anybody here present who would like to address the board? Or anybody online who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none? Um, oh, whoops, I'm gonna see if I'm gonna do selectmen's reports first. So what I'd like to do in the interest of time, because we have our consultant waiting on the line. Um, I'd like to uh ask that anybody who would like to submit selectmen's comments or reports, do so by email to Peg. Um, for inclusion in the record, but um, I don't think we need to go through the the time-consuming process of reading them now. Um. That's okay.
Yep.
Yes.
I just had one concern that was brought up last night that I'd rather not wait and have it in minutes.
Sure.
Um, with the uh waterline project for the school hill and extending into Park Hill. Park Hill last night at the meeting asked if um we would finally include them with any discussion that's taking place regarding that line because it'll. Um, affect where the hydrants go and where the water line goes and there are future plans, et cetera, et cetera. I told them I would pass that on, so if it passed on, completely exclude Park Hill um in any conversations regarding.
That's something more related than.
Yes.
Skidaddle. Um, but yeah, that that certainly would be something we would do. Um, okay, so uh we will have an executive session. Um, it should, I'd ask for a motion to go to executive session for personnel matters and negotiations. Uh, to include um Bob Leach, Doug Thomas and Tom Riordan.
Move we go into executive session, the five, to include the five of us, Bob Leach, Tom Riordan and Doug Thomas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at eight nineteen P M.
Aye, it's.
It's eleven twenty-three, we're out of executive session. No further business coming before the board. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at eleven twenty-three P M.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. It's not debatable. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned at eleven twenty-three P M.